Clunk, clunk. All right, so pursuant to the new, well, hang on. So this is the Los Altos Hills County Fire District regular meeting for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. We call this meeting to order. Pursuant due to the new rules, the coronavirus advisory notice, we will be using the teleconferencing for this regular meeting to this evening. And so that's why we are using it because of the government order. So at this point, I'd like to call, have the clerk call the roll. Item number one.
Yes, thank you. All right, commissioners, so I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comments or vote. President Warren.
Here.
Vice President Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Hear me, yes.
Commissioner Sreen.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Dennis.
Commissioner Carr. Yep. Got you, thank you. And Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
All right, all commissioners are present. Now, for the benefit of the recording, I am also going to conduct the staff roll call, which will occur in the same.
Let me, Cory, I screwed up and did not ask Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks to start the recording. Have you done so?
I have done so. The recording has begun.
Thank you. Okay, Cory, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. No, I have a recording too going, so double, double charge. Right, so I'm going to call staff, call them in the order each time. So first is Assistant Fire Chief Glass.
Good evening, President.
Yep. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Present.
District Legal Counsel Siegel.
Present.
Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks.
Present.
Okay, and members are present.
Thank you very much. All right, item two, public comment. Persons wishing to address the district on any subject where, whether or not on the agenda may do so now, please note, however, the district is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. Please note that while the district board will hear comments upon items which are on the agenda this evening, the district will not act on any such item until the item is under consideration by the district. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker. Do we have any public comments on items on or not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three. Item three, which is the president's remarks. So, good evening, everyone. Once again, we are convened in what can only be described as unique circumstances. First, I want to acknowledge the tremendous effort by the staff to keep this organization functioning. We, we went from, you know, we, you know, the nor, you know, to the new normal overnight, and the staff pulled its resources together and set about problem solving to the point that we were able to last month have a virtual meeting for the first time in the history of the district. And now we've had, and we're on to our second one. Hopefully, we don't have to have a third, but we never know. But that is, you know, the result of the dedication and the effort of the staff and the ability to improvise, problem solve, and coordinate, you know, all the different pieces that we needed to bring together to do this technologically, procedurally, and keep the different, you know, parts of the organization from the commission, the public, and the staff all aligned. So thank you all for, you know, making this happen in uncharted territory. And so we keep, we keep the organization moving, which is what we're here to do. And tonight, you know, we will, you know, be talking about the budget, our updated fuel reduction programs, update on the county budget, and so, and you, and how we're going to keep the strategic plan moving forward in these uncertain times. So, you know, I'm glad to be here. It's a nice break from my, you know, routine, and so I'm looking forward to a very productive evening. Thank you. And so with that, we will move on to item four, which is the essential governance function update. So, 4A, which is the Santa Clara County Public Health Orders. So, General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item 4A, Santa Clara County Health Order, was first adopted by the Board of Supervi, by the Health Department Board of Supervisors on March 16th. And subsequent to our last meeting, it was updated on March 31st, revised and updated. So we have those two health orders now in place. If I could move on to item 4B, I'll link the two together.
Please do.
Yes, thank you. 4B is for the distribution of Resolution 2014, which is a resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District determining the Los Altos Hills County Fire District's essential governmental functions. And these functions were designated by the commission, and in the resolution, the functions are designated by the commission along with the rationale, which lists the essential governmental functions, and the personnel to support those governmental function operations. The revised March 31st Shelter in Place Health Order clarified the requirements for social distancing, and it also added hazardous fuel reduction operations as an essential service under the revised order. Resolution 2014 needs no action at this time, but it is published and available for distribution. I have used the resolution and sent it to our various partners, and particularly asked them to share it with any vendors or contractors that are working under Resolution 2014, just to ensure that the contractors are aware of the social distancing requirements and are adhering to those. So the resolution has already served us well in the month since we met in March, and also, I feel, is currently up to date, doesn't need any modification, because the essential functions that are listing are, as I said, serving us well at this time. We're able to continue very quickly forward with all of our, our functions. The ones that we aren't, we will talk about as we go through the agenda. That's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right, any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners? I will call out each of your names. If you do not wish to comment, say, please say no comment. Vice President Vaughn.
No comment.
Commissioner Tyson.
Thanks for your fine work and no comment.
Commissioner Price.
No comment.
Commissioner Sreen.
No comment.
Commissioner Carr.
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney.
No comment.
No comments from myself, except thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, which is the Commission Ad Hoc Management Audit Subcommittee Update. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there is no update on this item.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussions from commissioners? Vice President Vaughn.
No comment.
Commissioner Tyson.
No comment.
Commissioner Price.
No comment.
Commissioner Sreen.
No comment.
Commissioner Carr.
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney.
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, thank you very much. We will now move on to item six, Santa Clara County Chief, Fire Chief Report. Assistant Fire Chief Glass, please provide the update.
Good evening, President, and commissioners, members of staff. It was a relatively slow month for calls within the district, which is, you know, always gives us a pleasure to say. We had no significant events and no dollar loss for the district during the last reporting period. Calls were down slightly, 168 in 2020 versus 255. This is a consistent trend that we've seen across the entire fire district and throughout the county. The initial month of March showed a decrease in call volume of approximately 20%. This, we attribute to the shelter in place order and the lack of people out and about. So we've seen a dramatic decrease in vehicle accidents and just, you know, standard run-of-the-mill calls that are people traveling to and from work or home. People have been adhering to the shelter in place order, so we've seen a significant decrease in call volume. Fifty-four calls during the month of March. We expect April to be on track to be even slower than that. Again, we're seeing decreases in call volume anywhere between 15 and 30%, averaging about 25 across the district. EMS calls, 53%, service calls were the 27, fire alarms, 11, hazardous conditions, 5% of the call volume, and one, one small fire. They did not, not, let's see, $20 in fire loss, excuse me. I stand corrected, I did report $0, but I'm showing 20 on this report. We did five programs, outreach to the community. Of course, this was before the shelter in place order that was at the Los Altos Hills. Looks like that was canceled. Looks like we canceled all of those, so I'm not sure why that's showing that we did five. I'm showing three, three that were canceled, the six, March 16th, March 24th, and March 28th, all as a result of COVID-19. Two were cert, it looks like all three were cert related. The map shows the distribution of calls, and with that, I'll take any questions that the commission might have.
I have a question, this is Dennis.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carr.
On the community education and risk reduction activities, I would find it more useful if the items that you're naming or giving the numbers for would be itemized. Like you say, you have five programs, what were they?
Okay, understood. I have that list, and it's not normally a part of the report, but I do have the information here. I will take a screenshot, and I will email it to the general manager, so, and the clerk, so that it can be presented to the board.
Can, can you have future reports, have more details on the written report?
I can work to see if that can be attached, but it comes in at a different time, and so that report that you see is a standardized template that we use across the entire fire district for all the different communities. Again, I can provide a snapshot to the clerk when I receive it, and I will email that this evening.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Chief Glass, this is Commissioner Kearney.
Yes, Commissioner, I have your sticker.
Oh, awesome, thank you. Only one?
How many do you need, sir? Sitting on my desk.
Outstanding, thank you. So I've got a question about EMS. Can you give us any overview of how the crews are preparing for and responding to medical calls?
Yeah.
Particularly if they're related to respiratory distress or any COVID-like symptoms?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Operationally, the Santa Clara County Fire Department deals with communicable diseases on a daily basis. So, an eye-opening experience for us was in 2014 when we dealt with the onslaught of Ebola. So a lot of our policies went under the microscope as a result of Ebola, and a lot of that precautionary measures, whether it's the wearing of personal protective equipment, whether it's the tactic of one person in, two people out, that was all established during that timeframe. So this, this precautionary measures, while we're very sensitive to the COVID-19 outbreak, is no different than any other communicable disease that is respiratory or airborne particulate-driven. So that would be tuberculosis, meningitis, Ebola, SARS, we had SARS-1, we've had Middle Eastern Respiratory Disease. All of these travel through the same mechanism. We typically, we always, FIT test is what we call the respiratory testing process that we do for our self-contained breathing apparatus, and as part of that, we also test for the P100 mask, which is the most stringent mask you can wear outside of supplied air respirator or a scrubber device known as a papper or self-contained breathing apparatus. So all of the tools are available. We carry the disposable gowns, we have the rubber gloves, we have the eyeglasses and goggles, we have face shields, and we have the N95 mask as well as the P100 mask on all of our apparatus. Some of the things that we've done within the station to comply with the health order, we did develop a working-from-home program for our 40-hour staff. We have done twice-a-day temperature monitoring, so when the crews come on duty in the morning and at evening time at dinner, everyone gets their temperature checked. They also, if they're developing any symptoms, they're immediately sent home for consult with their doctor. We have been doing priority screening and testing through Stanford and the county's public health office for COVID-19-related symptoms. At this point, I think we've had approximately 20 employees with symptoms. However, each of those have been tested and/or expired the 14-day incubation period with, without further symptoms. So we, at this point, I'm happy to report that we have zero positive COVID-19 exposures of firefighters or infections of firefighters. We've been on many, many calls, I'm sure, with people that have tested or are positive for COVID-19, but our PPE measures, our personal protective equipment, and our policies, as well as the diligence of our crews, have, have kept us from having a single infected firefighter. So at this point, we're very, very proud of that and the efforts of the crews. Any specific questions outside of that, or did that answer?
Yeah, no, that's, that's outstanding. Thank you, Chief Glass. One other question is, how are you folks configured for your PPE supply-wise?
So, we are doing very good. We have on hand, just shy of 20,000 N95 masks. We have an order in for 3,000 P100s. That is the one area where we, we could use more. We have approximately 200 on hand, but those are for the only very, very sick patients and the ones that require intubation or a nebulized medicine. So they're very, very few and far between, but we would like to have a larger stock on hand of that. We have adequate gloves, sanitizers, soap, gowns, and the rest of the personal protective equipment. So I, I think we've also implemented a mandatory surgical mask or disposable mask in all of our facilities. So any of our employees, whether 40-hour or 56 or in the stations, they should be adhering to mask or facial coverings while, while in the facilities at all times.
Outstanding, thank you. No further questions.
All right.
I do have a question. This is General Manager Logan. Chief Glass, I happened to see a newscast about two weeks ago, and it was, in fact, Chief Bowden spoke on the newscast, and it had to do with detoxing the firefighters when they came in from shifts, having them at facilities. Is that, is that, was that accurate? Is it going on? Could, basically what they were doing was stepping into pans of bleach for their shoes and then disrobing, showering, and then re-robing so they could go home to their families. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so yeah, I, that was at the Sheriff's Training Center there. That was a joint messaging campaign, and that, that is available for all first responders. However, it was primarily for law enforcement. Law enforcement doesn't have a lot of the personal protective equipment, the training, and the communicable disease education that the fire service or the EMS service has. So this was a big step for them. We were happy to support them through that. If, if a law enforcement officer was potentially contaminated with a COVID-19 droplet, they had a mechanism to decontaminate, not detox, just a clarification on the terminology there, decontaminate the officer's uniform, duty belt, gun, and, and vehicle at that location. And that is where they would step into the pan of bleach, disrobe in a private area, shower, and then re-robe with a new uniform, and somebody would make sure that their gun was secure while they were going through this procedure. These are some of the hazards that are present for law enforcement that don't necessarily exist for fire EMS. If a firefighter needs to take a shower, they can, they can, they have access to a pan with bleach and water in the fire station. They have the ability to go to a private room, they have showers, and there's no issue around the weapon. And so this was, they needed a system developed to decontaminate law enforcement, and so we were happy to assist them in that process.
Very good. All right, so any questions, comments, or discussions from the other commissioners? Vice President Vaughn.
No further questions.
Commissioner Tyson.
No questions, and congratulations, Chief Glass, on that fine record.
Thank you. We're, every day, we're trying to just make sure we strive for that goal.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Chief Glass. Excellent summary and report, excellent.
Thank you. And I have emailed the CES report for Commissioner Carr to the clerk and the general manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Sreen.
Thank you, but no comment.
All right, and that takes us through the other commissioners. Once again, Chief Glass, excellent report. Keep up the good work. Keep your crews safe, keep the public safe. Thank you.
Thank you, President.
All right, Chief Glass, thanks for the update, and if you would like to leave the call at this time, please feel free to do so.
I have an email to remain through item seven, so I, if the president concurs, I'll remain on the line through president, item seven.
Thank you very much. Yeah, please stay on the line through item seven. So we'll now move on to item seven, which is the general manager update. General Manager Logan, please provide your update. Jay.
Yes, did I, was I not on mute? Okay.
You're muted, you're back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, would you please refer to the general manager report slide deck, and I'll just go through the slides with you, just for an explanation. As you see, the cover starts out of the slide deck with a photograph of the Santa Clara County Dashboard. This is from the Health Department, and then you'll see, superimposed on that is a screenshot of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District website homepage, and there are two links on the homepage that directly will, will link the user to the Santa Clara County Health Department website. So we're very pleased with that and with the dashboard. So that's kind of the opening remark on the cover page. And then the, over to the right, you'll see, "Los Altos Hills County Fire District Responds to Shelter in Place Orders and to Public Health Emergencies." So the first couple of slides are in that theme. The, the second slide, or the first slide, talks about what activities we have been continuing to honor the shelter in place orders and to continue public education and outreach. And you'll see a list of those activities. The first one, the most important, I think, is we just subscribed for 12 months to our AT&amp;T account to add Zoom conferencing service agreement. And so right now, we're on a Zoom teleconference in March, in May. We hope to be on the Zoom video platform and conduct the meeting that, in that way. Secondly, the Zoom meetings are also coordinated messaging with our partner activities in Los Altos Hills Town, the City of Los Altos Emergency Preparedness Managers, and Recreation Staff. So we're using the Zoom platform to communicate with our partners on emergency preparedness. Third bullet is April 25th cert webinar will be on resiliency and psychological first aid via a video conference, and then May 2nd will be a pep class Thursday, April 30th, and 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and then Saturday, May 2nd, 10:00 AM. And I think Captain Gluhan is doing that. She can speak to that when we get into that part of her agenda. And then May 7th, an emergency preparedness checkup via video conferencing. And I'd also like to say that our technical services consultant, Victoria Beebe, presented a medical first aid kit presentation, and that will be posted on our website. It's, it's going through a first aid kit, and it's really a very, very interesting webinar. So those are the kinds of things that we're continuing to do to provide public education and outreach. The next slide is activities that support the response to public health emergency. And of course, the first one is the website links to the Santa Clara County COVID-19 Dashboard. And then each Wednesday, and it's going to go now to every other Wednesday, there's been a Los Altos Hills cert check-in for well-being and checking up on neighbors, and that's been done through Zoom conferencing. We've also been able to link into medical health information updates, which is a Friday briefing from a local physician via video conferencing. And the local physician is a member of the PAF organization. He's also a block action team member in City of Los Altos, and I attended the Friday briefing that he did along with Ann Heppenstahl. I highly recommend it, very much worth your time. And I think what really rings through is a neighbor helping neighbor theme, and his perspective as an empathetic and caring physician that has made himself available to the residents for the betterment of their education and understanding and support. And then another topic that came up as we were talking with cert members was a request for mailing resident signs with, to go on the mailboxes or somewhere in the front of the house where it's visible that says either okay or need help. And you have a PDF that shows what those signs look like. I believe those are probably from a couple of years ago, and I just wanted confirmation from the commission, if that is something that, that the commissioners would encourage us to do, is to mail those signs to residents during this health crisis that's occurring right now, and then also for any kind of disaster or emergency that may come along. So perhaps there can be some conversation.
Okay, so do you want to do that, General Manager Logan, do you want to do that now, or do you want to wait till we finish, wrap up your report, and we'll touch on item 7B?
Yeah, I think it'll be on 7B, thank you.
Let's do 7B, okay.
Yes, and then the last bullet on there is very important, because we had a representative from a donor contact the fire district and offer to donate 1,095 masks. That was right after our March meeting, and as you know, at that time, PPEs and N95s were very much in demand and very difficult to find. Because of the difficulty, I think, in making a very quick turnaround on the donation from the donor to the fire district, what we were able to do from a fire district perspective is facilitate the donation directly to AMR. And the donor specifically asked for the N95 masks to be priority directed to paramedics. And so Victoria Beebe, who was, who again, works with the district, was in the exact right spot, because she also works with AMR, American Medical Rescue, which is our paramedic group, and she was able to pick up the N95s with the help of Captain Gluhan, and they distributed those to the paramedics. And then we also distributed some of the masks to El Monte Station, because that was the second request of the donor, was to get them to our local fire department station. And then, so that was the, basically, the And then, so that was basically the distribution. So I want to take this moment to thank the donor and to let the Commission and the audience know that that donation did occur, and we're very, very grateful because that came at a very definite time. So if there's any questions or comments there, I'd be glad to take those when I finish this presentation. The next slide kind of gets into, I think, an interesting dynamic, and that is, who do you want to be during COVID-19? And this kind of gets into more the emotional IQ of what is going on. We can all have our plans and our projects, but this gets into what occurs emotionally with people when they're going through a crisis, which oftentimes is a loss. And I think that's what many of us are experiencing. So this was provided to me when I took a Zoom webinar on how to manage during crisis. And for the participants of that webinar, we were sent this diagram, which I thought was very revealing and very helpful. So I put it there for your use in hope that you will also send it to those that you think can benefit from it. I've tried to distribute it wildly. And then, the next slide, complete change of topic. This is now what I know best, after a bit of research that Cory Vargas and I did on the Santa Clara County Budget Timeline. And I will tell you that the budget that was adopted by the Commissioners was forwarded to the Office of Budget and Analysis, OBA, and to the representative. Cory and I reviewed the spreadsheets that were submitted by the OBA representative to the county executive's office, and they were the same numbers that were adopted by the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners. So that has taken place. There were budget workshops scheduled for May 11, 13, and 14. I believe those were just canceled. I think it was April 17th when they were canceled. But those workshops have been canceled. I checked the Board of Supervisors' agenda tonight, and the budget hearings are still scheduled for June 15, 16, 17. And then, I noticed a new date of June 19, 2020. So I will continue checking to confirm those dates. But at least, we'll have another Commission meeting in between the current meeting that we're having right now, and then the June meeting. We'll have a meeting in May, so I can give you an update at that time. Then I'll go to the next slide, which is an update on Form 700, Statements of Economic Interest. And I'll turn this over to District Clerk Vargas to talk about. Cory?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was looking for the unmute button. So just a quick update for the Form 700. On the 26th, the FPPC extended the due date from April 1st, 2020, to June 1st, 2020. Before I got that notice, though, on the morning of March 27th, also on the morning of March 27th, I received the final Form 700 for our District Commissioners and staff. So everybody is in compliance for the year.
Very good.
Good. Okay. So, Mr. President, I think that concludes our report. And if there are any questions or comments before I go on to Item 7B, would this be appropriate time to take any comments?
Yeah.
Or any questions?
I have one. This is Janice.
Thank you.
We have already sent out to the residents the "help and okay" sign that we're to use, I guess, in an event of a disaster. So how do we decide who doesn't have one?
I don't have a record as to when that occurred. The CERT felt it would be helpful to resend it. The town of Los Altos Hills asked if we would resend it. So I guess we just send it to everyone and hope to pick up the persons who either have lost them, misplaced them, don't have them, or are new to the community.
General Manager Logan, I have a comment too, Denise Gluhin.
Sure, of course.
So also, the instructions on those were centered around earthquake preparedness. So we thought the messaging would be just a little bit different. So it would be an updated message on how to utilize it under this use for the COVID virus specifically versus an earthquake survey. And then, it would be a coordination with CERTs to, again, go out in their zones and look to see if those are being posted, just to see of a response issue, what the community kind of needs and how they're responding. So again, the instructions would be just a little different than in the case of the earthquake, but the same concept. That way, if they've been lost or misplaced, or the people have moved in recently since they were originally distributed, the only place of distribution right now is down at the town of Los Altos Hills, which is obviously not a place that's open to the general public at this point. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, and then also, Chief Glass, if you would like to make some comments, kind of you to stay on the phone for this item.
Yeah, not a problem. One thing that I had, I just did want to say thank you for the donation from the donor. So if you could please pass that message. I know I'm mixing a little Item 7 with Item 7B here, but I did want to say thank you on behalf of the County Fire Department for the donation to the El Monte Station. As for Item 7B, the use of the department logo is absolutely acceptable in this condition. The one, I was reading through this, and typically, these signs are when telecommunications lines are down and/or cellular network is not available, whether it's 3G, 4G, LTE, or new 5G. And that's why people can use this as a mechanism to communicate to their CERT leaders. Here, we don't have that with the COVID-19. You know, the members and the residents of Los Altos Hills Fire District should still be able to reach out through the normal mechanisms to communicate their need for help. But if this is something that the CERT members want to do, and they want to use it as a mechanism, I don't see it being detrimental at all, and it may actually help, as long as they're maintaining their social distancing and wearing the appropriate PPE as they go in to support their neighbors. Other than that, I think it is a worthwhile endeavor, and as long as the CERT members are aware, and the block leaders are aware on how they need to be able to participate when interacting with the public.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
May I say something also? This is Duffy speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we can hear you, Duffy.
Okay, great. I really think, don't send it just plain with no instructions. I put a letter in this also, maybe Mark, or from someone from the district president of the district, describing why we need this and how to utilize it. And definitely, in accord with Denise's comments, we should update the message there that this is, when it's to be used, how it's to be used, and definitely to follow the usual, you know, call 911 or whatever they need for instructions if they do need help. So maybe a cover letter to accompany this with some updated instructions would be great. I think it's been at least three to four years since we sent this out, and maybe Cory would look back and see in the minutes when we previously authorized. I think it was when Mike Sanders was still here when we sent it out. So it's been a while. So I support sending it out.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are very good comments, and we can do that, and, you know, work with you too on how we message it.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I think...
Yeah, let's try to get a sense of, yeah, let's try to get a sense of the Commission as well. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the, thank you for the update, General Manager Logan. I'm going to go through and request comments from all the Commissioners, and in the process, see if we get a sense of the Commission on sending out the cards. So Commissioner, Vice President Vaughn?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, especially it's been three or four years since we sent out the last one. And so, yeah, most people may have discarded them from non-use over time, so I don't think it can hurt. So there wouldn't be any kind of detriment by the community having them. And then, I believe that they could be utilized for other emergencies as well. And so, we don't know anything in the sense of any possible social chaos that may derive from this thing by the time it's all over with as well. So I think it's a good idea to have them, and I'm not sure what the expense is on them. And maybe, Jay, you can shed some light on that.
I haven't priced anything out yet, but I don't anticipate it would be too great. I could probably send an email out once I get some cost estimates.
Gotcha. Okay. Fair enough. That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioner Tyson?
I think it sounds like a good idea. I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Commissioner Price?
Nope. Thank you.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yeah, I shared Melvin's question about the cost, but I think now people understand the use of these kind of cards better now. So I think it's a good thing to use this opportunity to really make people think about what kind of emergency help they need. So I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr, any additional comments?
Yes. I was just going to say, we might want to have a little subcommittee to review it and see if it needs any updating, and I'd be glad to be on that committee, do a little editing.
I think that's, thank you for volunteering. I think that's a great idea. So I think you have your subcommittee, Jay. Anyone else want to volunteer to be part of that subcommittee to help review it?
President Warren, this is Dan Siegel. I don't think we need a subcommittee here. It's certainly fine to have people assist the General Manager.
Okay.
But this doesn't rise to the level of needing a subcommittee, right? Because to the extent the GM wants some reviews, you can send it out to less than a quorum of the board, get some information, and revise.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's good advice. So, General Manager Logan, Commissioner Carr has volunteered to help edit. And if there's anyone else who would like to help edit, please let the General Manager know.
Okay. And I think Duffy also, would you be willing to assist with this?
Well, I'd like to defer on any editing to Denise to have her input on it. I think she would be, if she's willing, that is, to do it. That would be great.
I think Duffy, just a review. I mean, we'll get the staff to, yeah, just to review it.
Just review it is fine. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duffy. All right. And Commissioner Kearney?
Hey, I think it's a great idea, and I'm in favor of distributing it. Just to get an edit, a proposed edit in, I'm just wondering if it doesn't make sense to add the word "now" or "immediate" after "help means you need assistance now." "Okay" means you do not need assistance now, lest there be some confusion about sort of the emergent nature of placing a help sign on someone's door.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Now, we'll move on to Item 8, Emergency Services Manager Update. Emergency Services Manager Captain, Retired Captain Gluhin, please provide the update.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Thanks again for putting this together virtually. I know I miss seeing everybody, but thank you for coming on the call. Obviously, we've had to kind of, I guess, we heard today in the Fire Safe Council meeting, you know, unbuilding and rebuilding. So that's kind of where our focus has been at this point, because we were really trying to build towards a vegetation, community outreach, CERT outreach, all those things. Were a lot of items scheduled, but unfortunately, because of the current health standards, we had to cancel those. And now, we're trying to kind of pivot and look at how we can still push messages forward, move our programs, and enhance them, but do it with the social distancing and the electronic platforms that we're utilizing even tonight. So in that vein, we've had been in the Item A for the events and activities. As most of, a lot of the items were already mentioned in the General Manager's update, but we have been meeting virtually, in virtual formatting, with Fire Safe Council to discuss because back in the fall, we purchased the HIZ home ignition zone inspections, the evacuation workshops, and the community outreach workshops. We would like to continue that. What does it look like, and how does it move forward, is the question. So we're working on that. And out of that meeting, one of the things, one of the new products that Fire Safe Council started, which we're going to link into our website, is the Shelter in Yard. And it's basically going to be a weekly, what can you do if you're at home and you have some time to, you know, some of the items off in HIZ, it's kind of taking the HIZ and breaking it down into small pieces, taking those small pieces, and in turn, giving a project a week, basically, that they can maybe look at and address with some information around that. So again, this is a, you know, a social distancing platform. It's all run through Fire Safe Council. The link will be into their website. And again, it's a new program, Shelter in Yard. It's still actually in creation, but it is on their website. We'll get that link up onto our website here, so people can work on that. And then, we'll do a social media push around that, too, because that's kind of our solution to not being able to do the HIZ right now because it's not considered an essential service through Fire Safe Council. So again, that's the pivoting. We've mostly been acting as a district, as in the role of kind of an information officer, trying to put the most current information on our website relating to the COVID virus. Getting, I've been attending various meetings to get information on, you know, the dashboard updates, things like that. Some of the activities collaborating, as General Manager Logan showed with Los Alto City, and doing some, we're going to try some virtual, kind of abbreviated PEP-type, the personal emergency preparedness-type presentations. This is, actually, some of the silver lining out of this, like General Manager Logan already said, was we'll be able to record these and maybe archive them in things that we can use in the future as references and learning for the community. So it's probably going to be a nice silver lining as things turn out, to be able to record and do some of these things virtually, and maybe even incorporate that in our meetings moving forward for the people that don't come out in the evening, say, to a CERT meeting or something. So that's kind of that. I do have Rotary, quite a couple of months ago, Rotary asked me to do an emergency preparedness, and specifically, since it's right in the month that the goats are arriving, some information about the goats, that actually came out of the luncheon meeting that Commissioner Price had invited us to back in the early part of the year. It was one of the, one of the members asked me, she'd asked me for my card and asked me to speak. So that's coming up this Thursday. So if you're Rotary and you go to those, you may see a person you know there talking about emergency preparedness. Let's see, I think that is about it on activities for right now. I'm going to defer on what I've been doing for the CERTs because I've been stepping in the role for Victoria while she's, she's in charge of all the PPE for the AMR staff, paramedics, EMTs, and staff. So she's been over-the-top busy. So I've kind of stepped back in the role of a CERT coordinator also. So I'll wait till we get down to that to talk about the CERT items I've been doing.
Thank you.
If I can go ahead and move to Item B.
Yes.
The progress on the, so originally, we were calling this, in January, it was more of a GIS. I'm going to defer to Sarah in a second here to kind of give you an update. One of the things that we've looked at is, as she's come on, as was kind of identified, and she really has been able to expand in it verbally, the shortcomings of not having a centralized data collection point. Secondarily, the mapping is important for some of the questions and to show objects, but it's mostly how do we collect the data that we have? I know Chief Glass gave us a demonstration through Paul Morgan a couple of months ago on the possibilities of interfacing with Intera. But if I can defer to Sarah now to give you just a quick update on what we've done so far to see about moving this forward. Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Retired Captain Gluhin. This is Sarah Henricks. So I've been working with Captain Gluhin on this project. Basically, just with my initiation into the district, it's become very apparent that we don't have a centralized database. A lot of our data is in paper format. And of course, in the situation that we're in now, that's not accessible to us, in addition to being very inconvenient. We don't want to be going into the fire station and introducing any potential contaminants to our first responders. So it's really difficult for us to actually get any of the hard copies of data that we have anyway. I know that in January, the Commission received this proposal from SIG and Prometheus on a mapping project, but we've gone back to them and asked them to revise the scope of that project to really focus on data collection. And it's actually more of a data integration project, I think, than a data collection project because that data already exists, but we just need to find out where it is and how we can access it, and how we can pull it together into a format that the district can use that doesn't require us to always... it together into a format that the district can use, that doesn't require us to always ask other jurisdictions for access. The County Fire Department, the Town of Los Altos Hills, and Santa Clara County have been kind enough to provide us with a lot of that information, but all we're doing is looking for a way to consolidate all of that, the information that's specific to our district, so in May, we plan to bring back the revised scope, it'll be a phased approach, it'll talk about specifically what deliverables we're looking for, what data we're looking for, and it will really improve our ability to track metrics on the programs that we have in place, as well as evaluate implementation of new projects. The biggest things so far since I've been working with the district are just the brush chipping program and the shaded fuel break, we don't, we don't have data that actually allows us, in a map form, that's not just a PDF, to find out what area our, you know, our parcels are in for the brush chipping program, or where exactly our boundaries are, and who's responsible for the parcels along those boundaries for the shaded fuel break, so this is gonna be a really great opportunity for us to consolidate that information, to have it validated against the information that we have and the information that already exists, and I think it'll be a really useful tool for the district once it's finalized.
Very good, thanks Sarah.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and continue with item C, and then if there's any questions for me specifically, we can, I can open that up, so the last item, and I'm so excited to say that today the repairs should have happened on Zapatini and Horseshoe, they should have been completed, they were start, begun, they began on Monday, one of the items that did come out of that is, there was, there's many layers of construction that went on, analyzing soil, watching compaction, also we had to have Parisima Hill Water District Representative come out and look at the underground infrastructure prior to putting the system back together, currently that's all been done, they put chlorine in the hydrant, wait until Wednesday, and then they'll do a test on it, it has to sit after they install, so tomorrow they'll, they'll check the hydrants to see of their functionality, but one of the items that came out of that on the Zapatini hydrant repair is, it was recommended by the representative from Paro Hills Water District to install a retaining wall, two foot high, four to six feet in, in width to the back, and about two feet in depth, that will improve, there's a little bit of a rise in elevation around and behind the hydrant, that has a lot of tall brush and bushes, landscaping type items growing on it, so that'll help improve the structure around it, access to it in case of, of need for, for water, and again, it wasn't a requirement to finish this project, but it was a recommendation, so there'll be some future requests, I know Dan has some of the, the items going with Jen currently, to get that okay for a different scope and an estimate. Magdalena? Yeah, finally, the Magdalena hydrant has been completed, removing it back, and the Cal Water, Cal Water Project Infrastructure is, is continuing, and I didn't get the final wrap-up on the report back today, or a couple of days ago when I requested, so I'm not sure the exact status of, of completion for the Cal Water project that they had off of Magdalena. So that is the end of my report for Emergency Services Manager hat.
Very good, thank you, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, any questions, comments, or discussions from the Commissioner, Vice President Vaughn?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Tyson?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price? Duffy?
Excuse me, only the little wall that's going to be built, is that something that's a standard operating procedure, do, have we budgeted for it and all that good stuff?
So Commissioner Price, yes, it's, it's standard in where necessity indicates, that was the inspection with the Paro Hills Water District Supervisor, again, it's not a requirement, it was improvement to the site itself for access and visibility, so kind of it's, it's an enhancement, not a requirement, the hydrant will still be completely functional without it, he was able to pull, the Water District Representative was able to pull specifications right up on their computer, it's very standard, in fact, Magdalena was a very similar wall that was built, when it, when that hydrant was moved back from the roadway, so it's a very common addition, where there's slope and rise of soil.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Carry on.
Thank you, Commissioner Sprehn?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes, good report.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item, or items? Hearing none, we will move on to item nine, thank you Captain Gluhan, we'll move on to item nine, Community Emergency Response Team Activities.
All right, so I will go ahead and stand-
Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, please give the update.
Okay, I'm gonna stand in for Victoria, and again, she apologizes, she can't wait to join us again, but right now she's stepping in in a really limited role, just in case there's a surge of the virus and she gets pulled back in deep, she doesn't wanna, she feels like she's abandoned us, so she does apologize, so the main item on cert, you did receive, let me get the vest, the vest, hold on, item-
Item nine B in the packet.
Yeah, that's gonna be later on, so just that, well, that's one of the items she's continuing to work on, but I'll talk to that a little bit later when we get down to that. Start out, the main item that I was, had tried to step in and do is just a check-in of our volunteers, one of the, you know, the components of shelter in place, and because of the, the specific age of who's supposed to shelter in place, being the, the older population at greatest risk, that also pulls away any social interaction because of that, that's sheltering away from family even, because it's only people that you directly live with, that you're supposed to interact with, so there's an isolation component too, so I said, let's try the Zoom thing and see about what, how it's received, we've had two Zoom Wednesday night meetings at seven o'clock, actually, thank you, two Commissioners, well, three Commissioners attended total, to the, the two different meetings, and I think it's well received, we're going to go ahead and add in a cert supervisor meeting, it's going to be just prior to our regular meeting next Wednesday, we are gonna continue every Wednesday through the, right now, May 20th, if the health order changes on May 3rd, then we'll reevaluate that, but for right now, we're continuing weekly updates. Another nice component of it is we invited the town's ECC Emergency Communication Committee to join us, who most of them are certs anyhow, and it's been a nice interaction, and we're reviewing some of the ham radio operation components that are a complement to the cert program, so that's been nice, and that was another, when we discussed the okay and help signs, is kind of a, not a drill, but an activity that we can involve certs in, that communicates with the community at a safe distance, using a, you know, a sign as a communication tool, and it also helps with our, updating our statistics on who's active in cert, because we can look at the zones and the activity of the cert members in those zones with their reports, if they've seen any signs, and also with recon, similar to if we had a secondary event like an earthquake, because we have to remember, we have this COVID going on, but we could easily have a big earthquake on top of this, so one of the other questions that Commissioner Price actually brought out of our Wednesday night is, how about, what is our state of readiness, and I know we had voted that as an essential activity or service in our resolution from last month, so the cert supervisor meeting that's happening next week is to set up our plans for inventorying the trailer, inventorying the arc, and again, staying in small groups, using the social distancing and proper PPE, we'll take volunteers to come in and start working on getting a state of readiness going, again, we can't do full drills yet, by the way, the pathways run, which our ECC and certs assistant was canceled, we were gonna do a search and rescue small drill afterwards, so that is also canceled on May 9th coming up, just as an update, they won't be doing that. Let's see, that's kind of the Wednesday night, and then the interface with the Los Altos City Cert Program, BAT and Cert Program, again, some of those outreach items, we're inviting our certs after I have the Wednesday night meetings, whatever came up in the meetings, one of the nice things, one of our cert volunteers told about the rocks that are painted along the sides of the roads with messages, you know, it was kind of a feel-good, what, what they saw in the community when they were out walking along Fremont, and then just, you know, updates on what, what people have going on, so that interfacing, we invited the certs to go ahead and attend the Friday night with Dr. Wu, and it's, he does a very nice down-to-earth, like General Manager Logan mentioned, very worthwhile, he has a, a really, he goes over the dashboard numbers, kind of gives you what it means and a great perspective, so we're inviting, and we're all, I'm also sending links out to other informational items like our website and dashboard items, so that we can stay, our certs can stay as informed as anybody, because again, being a volunteer in the community, we want them to, to, you know, be a little bit more prepared, even if it's just informationally than maybe the normal resident might be, so we want to keep them in that position, because that's what they've trained to do, up in their time. I think that is the end of my report for that, we'll go down to item B on, on nine B, and the sample vest, unfortunately, because of the virus, it has been a little bit on hold, Victoria said the biggest item right now that is, the holdup is to find a single source vendor for the sizing, you could get the larger sizes all from one vendor, because we're again adapting a surveying vest into an emergency cert vest, and then we're going to personalize it to the, with the logoing, so this is a sample vest, also the vendor being able to provide these aftermarket additions, so she's trying to get the vendor that would be able to get the size range that we need, and do some of the personal, personalization, i.e. silk screening, so that we don't have to do as much aftermarket items, so that's kind of the status of that, again, because she's been busy, it's been a little bit slowed, and because a lot of the, the companies aren't running their inventories as quickly, and the responses as quickly as in the past before the virus, so that's the nine B, and I finished my report with that, thank you.
Great, thanks Captain, any feedback, we'll get feedback on this from the Commission, any questions, comments, or discussions from the Commissioners, Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions but a comment about those rocks on Fremont Avenue, I, I've gotten into it and I've painted some of my own, so next time you come to my house, you'll see them.
Thank you Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you so much, I know the community is really enjoying seeing that, so thank you, I, I hope that that continues, and I hope I hear more about it on Wednesday night, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Price?
Comment, I really have to thank Captain Gluhan for putting together this, keeping it all together, for the cert, you're really implementing what our real goal was, and I think Roger would agree, trying to reactivate our certs and motivate them to stay together, because you had about fifteen or sixteen people on the meeting that we, I participated last Wednesday night, and I know you had probably equal that number before, and I just think it's terrific that they're motivated and they're coming together, and it was great getting the summary report at the end, at the conclusion, with the information, with the numbers for all of the ECC people, and having Anderson aboard was really good also. And let me just make a comment about the new pet rocks that we're finding, I think they're wonderful, and George, you're really terrific to make some, I think that's wonderful, so keep up the good work.
I already had the pink and the rocks.
Commissioner Sprehn?
Totally agree, that's, I appreciate Captain Gluhan for really keeping things going and really moving it forward, and I'm enjoying the rocks as well, none of them are mine, no other comments.
Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney?
I'm embarrassed to say that, living up on Moody and the backside of beyond, we don't have a lot of traffic, we don't have painted rocks, but I definitely will get down into town to take a look at those, Captain Gluhan, I do have a question about one of your comments about cert tasking and inventorying the arc and the trailer, does it make sense for you, I, maybe you've already done this, but if there's a great surplus of N-100s or N-95s, does it make sense for us to think about prioritizing the distribution of those to rural metro or to the, to county fire?
So yeah, what exactly, when the donation happened, we actually took a percentage to supplement some of our certs, we really don't have that many N-94s in a back stock, so we put a small amount, forty, into our cert cash to add up, so we have about two hundred, which at this point, I know the county sent out, do you have any stockpiles, and that was the, kind of the, the tipping point number was five hundred in quantity, but absolutely if El Monte Station got short or anything, Chief Schumate, who's in operations, knows that we have those, that few extra there, he said they have plenty at El Monte Station, as was reflected in Chief Glass's report, but absolutely, we're just saving those in case we did need to activate under this COVID for our certs, so we could give them the highest level protection, and secondarily, they are particulate masks, if we did have an earthquake or something where we did need the particulate component, I want to make sure we have those on hand for a secondary, if it does get to the levels where they absolutely need them, we're, we're keeping in touch, having Victoria there, definitely keeping in touch with, with those needs, thank you.
Great, thanks, and I just want to second everyone else's, thanks for pulling the program together and pushing it forward in the way that you have.
Very good, thank you. Is there any public comment on these items? Hearing none, thank you Captain, so we will now move on to item 10, the Hazardous Fuel Reduction Update, so let's move to 10A, which is Residential Tree Removal Program Phase Two, Corey? I'll get your name here to provide an update. Corey, are you on mute?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, was on mute, apologize for that, so you should have before you the Residential Tree Removal Program report, and Phases One and Two are all complete, as reported in the last meeting, Phase One by Bay Area Tree Specialist was completed in February, February 11th, and Phase Two by SP McLanahan was completed on March 16th, and the two columns will show you, they show what the original service agreement for each phase was, what the total agreed spending was, and then I break it down, the, a number of trees and the amount that was actually paid to each of the vendors, and then the cost of the trees that were not removed, and therefore not paid to the vendors, and then at the very bottom, highlighted in green, is the total tree program spending for the fiscal year, year to date, which is $290,038. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Any questions from the Commission?
I am hearing none.
Any questions from the public? I'm not doing a formal query, I'll do a formal query at the end, but it's one, because it's fairly detailed, any questions from the public? Hearing none, that was 10A, 10B, Brush and Wood Shipping Program, Pilot Project Areas Four and Five, Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to report that we are now in April, which is Area Four, and this is the first month of the pilot project with Fire Safe Council, so end of March, we moved from the contractor into Fire Safe Council, and when the Fuel Reductions Manager reported to me from Fire Safe Council a couple of days ago, he started out the conversation with the word fantastic, and so that was his comment, that the transition in the brush shipping- And so that was his comment, that the transition in the brush shipping has gone very, very, very well. So we're very pleased with that. A lot of work and pre-planning for the transition went into working together in a partnership with this. So let me just give you some of the information. Now, each week, we have piles that are measured and tagged and then photographed. The photographs go up for a bid from contractors to remove those piles on a weekly basis. There's three weeks per month that this activity occurs. So three of the piles have, three of the weeks, the piles have been bid and we're in the third week now. And McClanahan is currently the bidder, was awarded the bid the third week. Those are all under process. So I'll get a end of the month report to you, will be given to me sometime next week. I'll report that in May. So the bidding is working well. Contractors are performing according to social distancing and guidelines. That's being monitored. And we've not gotten any complaints from residents. Fire Safe Council hasn't. The thing I like is we have from Fire Safe Council, a coordinator who works with all of our residents, and she is calling each resident after the shipping to do an evaluation on the service. So we'll have a lot of metrics coming in. Sarah Hendricks is already setting up her spreadsheets to work on those metrics. So we'll really have some evaluative data, not only in cost, but also in satisfaction of the residents. So I'm very pleased with how that's going. And then area five will occur in May and will continue the same kind of protocols, which is each week, each of the piles, piles that have been submitted during that week will be bid on by various contractors. Bid will be awarded and then the shipping will take place. So we've been able to put the bidding process in to the brush chipping protocols. So that's my report on item B.
Okay. So let's just pause there. Any, informally, any questions from, comments from the commission?
This is George.
Yeah, George.
I'm in area five, so I signed up for May 4th. And I have to say, the combination of the shelter in place, a pole pruner and a chainsaw has meant a good part of my driveway is piled up with brush. So I'm eagerly awaiting to be part of that experimental area five brush chipping project. The only feedback I've gotten from my next door neighbor who says, George, I don't like the new plan. And I said, why not? And he said, well, we can't add to it. Or why did you do it? I said, we had no good way to do metrics or measure satisfaction or even do competitive bidding. And he said, oh, well, in that case, yeah, I get it. There's your feedback.
Thank you, George. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners? Ask from the public? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. Let's move to item 10C, which is the goat grazing for vegetation management, one of my favorite programs. General Manager Logan?
Yes, and I'm going to hand this over to Captain Gluham because she's got some up-to-date information that just occurred.
Yeah, so I, this is Captain Gluham again, a retired Captain Gluham. I talked to Robert McGrew, who owns the ecosystem goat grazing company. There's been a lot of silence, so I wasn't sure what was going to go on. He is also surprisingly affected by COVID-19. A lot of his herders have not been able to come back for various reasons. So he's had a hard time. And additionally, an impact is because of the distancing, social distancing, a lot of the traditional type clearing with the work crews that CalFire uses is not able to happen at this point because they have big vans that everybody travels in and it's remote locations. So they haven't been able to use that. So he's in high demand for alternative ways to control brush. So that being said, that was kind of a background on what he gave me informationally. He's tentatively trying to get the herders and the trailers and the fencing set up on Thursday and Friday. I reached out to Nicole Bowersox from the town for her collaboration in preparing for the mapping and the areas that are excluded in the grazing. Also reached out to Paris Mahol Water for the location and staging area of the trailers to be prepared for their arrival. And talked to the residents that have reached out to me specifically with special needs around the burn preserve and the goats doing their annual grazing. We will have the same herder that we've had for the last, I think he said 10 years. So he's very familiar with the layout, what we've done in the past. That's very nice. Obviously, social distancing is not a problem with goat herders. They don't see anybody for days usually and don't have a problem with the social distancing unless it's people in the preserve coming up to them. So I think that's end of report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, then we'll move. Thank you. Let's move to item 10D, which is the green waste yard waste drop off. General Manager Logan?
Yes, I hope to have information on this. I really don't have too much at this point in time, other than to say Green Waste, again, has suspended the yard waste drop off with their difficulty with having enough staff to do waste removal and also to be able to comply with social distancing. So it was suspended for April and then also will be suspended for May. I'll be collaborating with Nicole Bowersox from the town to see if we can do some kind of a workaround on that, but I don't have anything to report at this point in time.
Very good. Thank you. And let's move to 10E, which is the home ignition zone HIZ program. General Manager Logan and Captain Gluham?
Yes, I'll pitch it to Captain Gluham and she'll give an update on that.
Okay, so for shaded fuel break, again, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Home ignition zone, this was one of the major topics that we discussed in our last couple of weeks ago in our meeting with the representatives from Fire Safe Council. I had a very proactive residential area that we had been set up prior to the COVID shelter in place orders to do workshops and HIZs. Unfortunately, when those were excluded as essential activities and services, we had to put those on hold. We do have 20 people that signed up out of that homeowners association or that group of homeowners for HIZ. So currently, the Fire Safe Council, through their website, takes the person, has, person fills out the request for an HIZ. And then from that request, their, the information, they're sent back an email that they've been received as a person on the waiting list and that as soon as this activity is initiated again, there'll be scheduled appointments. Fire Safe Council has added extra staffing because at this point currently, the current update, they said they have about 40 people on a waiting list. 25 to 30 of those are from Los Altos Hills specifically. So it's going to be a lot of, it's going to need a lot of traction and a lot of man-hours once that activity is allowed again. Again, the shelter, the new shelter in yard program is kind of a replacement for the moment for the activities that would be given in a report to a resident. The component that's most essential is that interaction that happens between the Fire Safe Council representatives or the specialists that's walking around during that hour report or our evaluation or survey of the property and the home for its ignition components. So that's the part that's really important and they're handing clipboards back and forth. So that's why the activity, it just involves closeness because things have been brought up, like can they FaceTime, you know, while they're doing it with the resident? And it really needs to have that, that personal service component. So at this point, it will be still on hold, but that, that additional program that they're starting at Fire Safe Council hopefully will help supplement that and still be able to educate residents in the meantime. That's the end of HIZ report.
Very good. Any questions from the commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, then let's move to 10F, which is the shaded fuel break, hazardous fuel reduction along Page Mill Road, phase one.
Yes, I have.
General Manager Logan?
Thank you. I have an update from the fuel hazardous, fuel hazards reduction manager on this JR call. And his notes indicate the following, that the tree contractor for the project has been selected, the traffic contractor for the project is selected, purchase orders are approved, traffic control plan has been completed, and now pending are roads and airport encroachment permit. But I understand that that department in the county is working from home, so we're not getting a response back from them yet. And then city of Los, town of Los Altos Hills encroachment application has been submitted. And permission forms for right of way entry, there are five signatures of the 20 completed. So that's an update on the progress that's being made thus far on the shaded fuel break and escape route project. That's the end of my report on that.
Very good. Thank you, General Manager Logan.
Yeah, I would like to comment, just one other item, back to 10B, the brush chipping. Really some excellent effort in this last month. And I'd like to thank Sarah Hendricks and also Roger Spreen and the rest of the staff for helping out with how we're now managing the online registrations. Those registrations are now being populated directly in the spreadsheet. And then Cory Vargas is the manager of that spreadsheet for the integrity of the data. And then that spreadsheet is downloaded and sent to Fire Safe Council. So what we're finding is really good efficiency in using online registration. When cards come in, they're just added manually into the spreadsheet database. But we're making good progress and I'm very hopeful because I think that's going to give us also some good metrics. So again, a lot of collaboration and thank you, Commissioner Spreen, for helping us with understanding how those spreadsheets work, also with Corin Development, who's our website instructor in putting those, the software that automatically downloads the online registrations into spreadsheets for us to use. So that's just a good progress report on that. And that's the end of the report on item 10.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right. Yes, it's encouraging to hear, you know, the advances your team is making. All right, so let's close this out formally. Any comments, questions or discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
He'll come in.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item?
President Warren, Brian Glass.
Yes, Chief Glass?
I just, for the record, I'll be leaving the call unless there's any further need for me to stay on.
Any questions for Chief Glass? Chief Glass, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none? We will now move on to item 11, which is the personnel update, which is 11A, which is the general manager performance review. And seeing that I have been speaking all night, I'm going to turn this over to my colleague and subcommittee member, Commissioner Spreen.
Roger? Happy to, happy to give President Warren a break here. Okay.
Go ahead.
There's sort of two things I'd like to do tonight on behalf of the personnel subcommittee. The first is to address the contract amendment that's in the packet as item 12, a resolution to update the contract we have with our general manager. And the second will be to ask the commission for direction on a future topic to bring up next month that arose out of this performance review. And that's about creating a spending authorization for the general manager. I'll discuss that later. I want to take you back to talk about this performance review and sort of remind everyone the long road we've been on for this. I just think it speaks well of the organization. As a personnel subcommittee, we took quite a few steps. We recognized this to be our organization's first real review of an employee. We engaged Marcy to help us do it both professionally and appropriately. We collected feedback jointly at the commission. We had subcommittee meetings with Jay and Marcy, quite a few of them, to feedback, both to collect the information and discuss performance, as well as Jay's needs and how to keep the GM role both effective and achievable. We did compensation investigation and analysis and we had obviously closed sessions at the commission to discuss performance and compensation changes and so forth. In addition, as part of this process, we also kind of got some other benefits, sort of on a constructive, broader topics that came out. We did a joint collection of overall organizational goals, both to help us all understand what our joint goals were, but also to help guide the general manager's task prioritization. You know, we discussed the general manager role within an organization that has no office and no full-time employees. And we've also discussed the feasibility of the role and how it works with the ongoing and unpredictable strategic evolution of our organization. Since our last commission meeting, there've been continued feedback between the personnel subcommittee, Marcy and Jay, and I think tonight wraps up this process for good for this year. The contract amendment that's in the packet as resolution 2015 reflects the changes we discussed in last month's closed session, adjusted for particular timing of when this contract would be approved. I'd like to point out that Jay's been working on her former original contract, which was set up by Commissioner Tyson, you know, well more than a year and a half or more ago. And there have been no modifications since. No cost of living, no performance changes, nothing during any of that time. Furthermore, this review process itself took considerable time. We started this, I think, before the turn of the year, you know, in an era when we could actually get together in person, and now we're doing these things remotely. So Jay has been very patient in letting us as an organization work through this process of review. I really thank her for that. Now, moving on to this, what's really item 12A, the resolution, I'd like to point out that the changes are, are really reflected as financial compensation, which reflects cost of living increases over a long period, performance-based increase, and also a technology stipend to cover her ongoing requirement for cell phones, laptops, printers, et cetera, when she has no office under our, you know, she has to use her own, her own things for that. And these are fairly standard as compensation items. Also, the contract period, which will go through this calendar year. As a reminder, this is a shorter period than previously, both reflecting the length of time this review process took, and also just the open question on the strategic form of our district is changing quite rapidly. So we want to make sure that we have a chance to potentially come back to modify that role in light of ongoing audits and other published statements in the county about what the district might become. So we want to sort of match those up. So those should be what's reflected in the contract amendment. And in terms of completing this personnel review, I'd like us to adopt resolution 2015 and I'd be happy to make the motion to adopt 2015 at this time.
Commissioner Spreen, I recognize you as making the motion to adopt resolution 2015. We have a second.
Second. Definitely second.
All right. With that, I'm going to poll the commission on questions around, or comments and discussions around item 2015. Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
I'm pleased to see the direction this is taken in support of our fine general manager, Logan.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Yes, I certainly approve and I want to thank Roger and Mark, Commissioner Warren, for putting this performance appraisal together. It was excellent and it was a model for the future going forward. And I certainly approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spreen, any additional comments?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
I just had a question. The, did I miss it? Does the agreement state? Does the agreement state the number of hours for which we're paying?
It, uh.
Go ahead.
It's halftime. It, it, it's still the same hourly structure that we've, we've had, Janice, it's halftime.
Halftime. Thank you.
Commissioner Kearney?
I second the comments of the other commissioners and have no further comments or questions.
Thank you. We have, oh, we have an adoption, we have a resolution on the floor that's been seconded. Are the, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? I think we can now, Roger, do you want to talk at this point about?
No, let's, let's go ahead and approve this, and, and then we'll, then I'll come on with a, a discussion for direction.
All right, so at this time, we want to move to a roll call vote to adopt Resolution 2015. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote for, for adoption of Resolution 2015.
Hey, President Warren?
Strong yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Another strong yes.
Hey, Commissioner Tyson?
As strong as Warren and Vaughn put together, yes.
Commissioner Price?
Need I say more? Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank the commissioners for their confidence and their support. And I look forward to working with everyone, staff, consultants, commissioners, the public, in facing what lies ahead of us with very positive solutions and making sure the district is always in a forward-moving process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
All right.
If I may continue with Personnel Subcommittee. Okay. Again, the, the other topic which I alluded to, so this is not, this is not the agenda specifically, so this is nothing we're going to vote on, but I want to introduce it publicly and sort of get some direction for our next meeting, is a topic that arose out of this performance review, which is the topic in looking at the role of general manager and the, you know, any sort of feasibility or inefficiencies in that. And the topic is of spending authorization. And I, I'd like to agendize a proposal coming up in the May meeting, and just to give you a little background on the topic, so I can go, go away from this and bring back something in May that will sort of address hopefully what commissioners think. You know, the lack of any spending authority for our general manager right now causes inefficiencies and really inability to perform in a, in a really timely manner. And we have no physical office, several part-time staff members performing services, reporting to Jay, all working out of their homes, and us all being part-time. The general manager is kind of strangled at not being able to get resources to complete jobs when they need to be done. These are all items that are already budgeted. This is not about altering strategic decisions that we have made, it's just tactical spending. I, I feel like there's been general consensus that some sort of authorizations called for, but there are appropriately different opinions as to what those specifics should be. I certainly understand the concerns, you know, that we'd be changing a bit from, right now, the commission approves every expense, moving to a little more for the commission seeing the dispersions every month, you know, within certain limitations. It's a little looser of a structure, so I understand that that's a change there. I think, you know, Jay has clearly proven her, you know, trustworthiness with our resources, but we still want to have something that we feel responsible about as a commission. I think there are two decision factors we want to think about. One is the structure of what kind of authorization you provide, which is typically either a some amount per item or some amount per period, or both. This is a case where we might be able to maybe combine people's desires to sort of create a policy that can fit both of those structures. And then, of course, the dollar amount, either per item or per period. I just, we looked at some comparables of other towns, I don't have them in front of me right now, but I can tell you that, you know, the Town of Los Altos Hills has a per-item spending authorization for its city, for its city manager. I believe it's $25,000 now per item. And those can, there can be multiple of those per period. You know, a good way if you sort of want to think what's a reasonable number is to kind of look at our monthly dispersions at the past few meetings and see what kind of items come up that a general manager could, might want to take care of. And that's things like, you know, hydrant repairs that happen when they get hit, or things that sort of need to be addressed immediately, resources for search to get, get purchased, you know, before meetings or as a result of meetings and so forth. And so I'd like to, I've been long-winded, but I wanted to sort of outline the thinking so that everyone's at the same point in discussing this. And what I'd like to do is come back in May with a starting proposal that we can either, you know, play with. And I'm thinking about, and I have not discussed with anybody, so I'm just throwing this down the table for people to think about, maybe a jointly structured authorization with a certain amount per item and a certain max per month. I would throw out numbers like maybe $15,000 per item, the max of maybe $25,000 per calendar month. So that way we would see things come in, but they wouldn't, she wouldn't be strangled for any particular item that's typical for us. So that's what I'd like to come back with in May. And I'm, I'm, tonight, I'm just looking for a direction. Do people think it's something we should take up? Are there big red flags that you'd like us to consider before we go come back with something in writing? And just any general thoughts?
Just for the rest of the commission, you know, I've, you know, Roger and I have actually, you know, discussed this together. I fully support what Roger is bringing forward. So this is the voice of the Personnel Subcommittee, and this came out of our discussions with Jay, and how do we make the role more impactful? And so I want the rest of the commission to understand that, you know, I, I support the, you know, the proposal that Roger's bringing forward.
Are you going to go down the list of members to make comments?
Sure, what, why don't I do that? So Vice President Vaughn, comments?
I supported also, I, I think I was involved a little bit in one of those conversations, and, and I, I support Roger's proposal. I have no other discussion on it. No questions.
Mr. Tyson?
That proposal makes sense in terms of being able to just operate the fire district on a, on a regular continuing basis. The fact is, whatever expenditures we do incur, are incurred, they come back to us. We still have a chance to, to see them, so it's just a question of the reasonable amounts in any given flow. And what Roger threw out there, the 15,000, 25,000 a month, those sound like good numbers to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
I hardly suggest we move in this direction. I support it totally, Roger and Mark. And, for example, these fire hydrants, it's taken us months to get this fire hydrant thing done, and then to come back and find out that we need to build a little minor wall. I mean, all this can be facilitated, and since we're going to be working out of our houses more frequently, these, this era that we're in, I think that it needs to go forward. So I fully support the 15, 25,000 on a monthly basis is fine. Go for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
I'm in agreement with the previous comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney?
I support the proposals. No further comments or questions.
Thank you. So Roger, I think we have our marching orders to go draft up a resolution that we can put on the agenda for the May meeting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time. That ends my report.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We will now move to item 13, the 2020-2025 Strategic Plan Update. General Manager Logan, please provide your update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will ask Special Projects Service Consultant Sarah Hendricks to provide an update. She has been in touch with CPSE, the provider for our strategic plan, and has an update to provide to you. So Sarah, could you take over?
Yes, thank you, Jay. Thank you, President Warren. So as Jay mentioned, I've been in contact with CPSE. You originally had their contract on your tentative agenda last month, but we had to delay the signing of that contract because of the COVID-19 pandemic. CPSE was not prepared to provide the strategic plan meetings while also adhering to social distancing requirements. In speaking with them, they are exploring options of delivering this service remotely. However, there is no guarantee that they'll be able to do that. We have tentatively scheduled the strategic plan to take place September 21st to September 24th. So that's four days in September, Monday through Thursday. September 21st, that Monday, will be the external stakeholder meeting. There's, we probably would request that a commissioner attend to welcome people to the meeting, and then basically it's people working individually to provide their feedback on a matrix that's provided by CPSE. September 22nd through the 24th, Tuesday through Thursday, are the internal stakeholder meetings. Those will last all day, and CPSE is requesting that commissioners attend as much as possible. They understand that it is a big-time commitment, and if people need to come and go, they're, they're welcome to do that. But they are asking that, that as many people attend as possible for as long as possible so that we can really collect as much feedback as possible. Again, the, the schedule is tentative based on what's going to happen with COVID-19. They're exploring options, as I said, for delivering it remotely. It may be difficult, but I'm of the opinion that it can be done, just might require a little bit of practice and a little bit of willingness of you commissioners to participate online, which you're obviously already willing to do since we're doing this right now. We also have been exploring other options in case CPSE is not able to deliver this, this service in September. We're looking into other options for different agencies or even just conducting a one-year strategic plan to extend it to 2021, and then we can try to figure out how to move forward from there.
Sarah, anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Thanks very much. All right, so any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
Since I was involved with the initial one, Sarah, I would just like to say a couple of things. First of all, I have a listing and the original invitations we sent out to some of the people before that we would want to definitely include some of our members that are in the unincorporated area. And Commissioner Vaughn has been very helpful in keeping that interface going with that group, so we would definitely want to include them. So when it sits down, time to start sending out in advance, probably a month in advance, you'll want to send out the invitations for the external stakeholders. We will have to work together on that. For me, I really do feel that it's important not to do this electronically, virtually. It's certainly possible to do that. I was just on a big meeting on Saturday with 160 people, and it's somewhat, it's more difficult to really get across certain issues and questions and get the interaction that you want doing it virtually. So I would just suggest that we should definitely try to keep to having the organization present and the people one-on-one so we can all be together. And we've done that at the fire station in the past. We could do it there again, probably. But anyway, I'm happy to work together with you on that to see that it goes forward. Sounds like a good plan. That date is actually not bad, the 21st through the 24th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Spreen?
I'm torn. I, I certainly trust Duffy's instincts for getting a strategic plan done, and she really has the experience of having done this for us. At the same time, I, I don't want us to get too far behind on it, and I don't know how much schedule delay we would, we would experience. So I'm, I'm a bit torn myself.
We're having to wait till March, or excuse me, wait till September?
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure. If, if we didn't go forward electronically, that kind of, did that not put us on a off-track ambiguous time schedule?
So.
Well, I think we, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think it would be too bad. It's really for 21 anyway, isn't it? That we're really looking forward to, this is through 20. So I think we'd be okay. Maybe need to talk, Roger, we should sit down and talk about it.
I mean, I, I have to say that while it's great that we can function, you know, in a teleconference fashion, between this and some of the public video meetings that has a town, it's clearly a less efficient or effective way to have the public involved. And if we want the strategic plan to represent public involvement, you know, we, we, I think having real people meetings is important. If there are portions of this that can be done electronically, I'd sort of support that. But I, I kind of agree that at some point, we've got to have public meetings where people can really walk in and, and speak.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I think isn't that the, the intent of waiting till September is hopefully would facilitate that.
Yes, that's correct. So the, the tentative dates in September are, operationally, we're, we're planning on them being real in, you know, real-time, in real-life meetings, not, not virtual meetings. However, if, you know, August rolls around and it looks like this, we're still in a similar situation and there are still, you know, some shelter-in-place effects in order or anything like that, then that's when we would consider either a virtual option or looking at, you know, some other kind of way to extend the current strategic plan until the shelter-in-place orders are lifted.
Right.
Okay.
That sounds fine.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Carr?
I agree, we need some flexibility here.
How so?
Well, we have it tentatively set for September, September 21st to 24th. I, I think the, keeping the tentative there in case things change, it makes sense.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney?
No questions, no comments.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? Thank you very much. We will now move on to item 14, the Financial Consultant Update. So 14A, which is the fiscal year 2021 budget. That would be, is it you, Jay, or is it Corey?
That would be Corey.
Corey.
Yes, yeah. So I think 14A and 14B were, we kind of covered during the, the GM report in that 14A, the, the 2021 budget was submitted to OBA, as Jay reported on the spreadsheet, and their numbers that they accepted agree with the numbers that I submitted. And then, of course, the, the Budget Workshop Public Hearing Process, as Jay stated, we're keeping an eye on the website, the supervisor's website, to report back on updates on that. Now, can I, before I get into 14C, may I have permission of the President to provide an update on item 7B, the okay slash help cards?
Please.
All right, thank you. So I was able to look through some minutes in this last hour, and we have the September 21st, 2010 meeting. The cost was approved for spending on the signs of $8,486.58. Now, I didn't see the number of parcels listed anywhere, the number of, of actual cards. I checked the minutes going back and forth from that date. But for our brush chipping mailing list, we have approximately 4,200 addresses listed. I'm assuming that's probably the same mailing list that was utilized. So the cost to print the cards and to mail them came out to roughly $2 per card back in, back in 2010, 10 years ago. And then on March 17th, 2015. on March 17th, 2015, Mike Sanders asked for 200 more cards to pass out to the PEP and CERT participants, and he said at the time roughly $1 per card, because those would just be handouts, not mailed. So that's just an update, a little financial update.
Real-time problem solving. Thank you.
That's terrific, Corey.
Okay. So then on to 14C, the budget narrative. You all have the latest and greatest version in front of you. Just a few minor from the last month's. I titled some charts. I, what else did I do? I think I made a little clarification about the county spending, the money that we're paying to, like, the Clerk of the Board, that we don't decide what accounts to use on that. The county just dictates what accounts we use, I think, because there was a question as to, well, why don't we just expend it in a different account? So I clarified on that. I don't think there was like a couple number changes where I had made a typo. I had forgot to recalculate based on the change of that $200,000 moving out of the water flow program. So I think everything else, unless anybody has any other comments or corrections, we can entertain. What I'm looking to do is, I guess, to get a motion to post this or adopt this as our official narrative so it can be posted on our website to the public.
All right. I'll take care of that for us. So let me take care of this formally. So any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners on any of these items? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right. If there's no further discussion on these items, I will entertain a motion for item C, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget Narrative. Will the commissioner making the motion and will the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording?
This is Duffy. I move that we second, or that we approve the narrative for 2021.
Can you second, please?
George will second.
Thank you. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
Thank you, President Warren. Okay, so President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sprehn?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you for wrapping up the budget process. Looks great. That narrative is a fantastic document. So we'll now move to item 14D, or actually 14D, which is the District Credit Card. Financial Consultant Vargas, please provide the update.
Yes, so I have an email from my Wells Fargo contact. Excuse me, I'm, so on April 13th, she sent me an email. She explained that there's been a change in the approving manager from the time that we originally submitted our request to the final request, I guess, this past week. So that's caused a little bit of a delay, and I think also the public, you know, COVID-19, everybody working from home is a little bit more of a delay as well. But she did say she was hoping it would be approved within a week, which would have been yesterday for the week. So I will follow up with her and see if there's any more updates, maybe tomorrow.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, or discussions from the commissioners on item 14D? Vice President Vaughn?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No comments.
Commissioner Price?
No, no comment.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Now, we'll now move to item 14E, Approval of Authorization of Billing to the Amount of $11,337.50 for S.P. McClanahan for fiscal year 2019/20 Brush Chipping Services. General Manager Logan, you have the background on this additional expenditure, I believe?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll make my remarks and then ask legal counsel Dan Siegel to also add his remarks. So this is a request for, the residential request for brush chipping were higher than expected the last two weeks in March. As a result, the billing exceeded the amount expected for the month of March, thereby needing approval from the commission to accept the billing and thereby making payment of the invoice. So with that, as the background, I think one of the things that occurred in March is we had the shelter-in-place order, and chipping was halted for a number of days to enable training of the crews and adjust to the social distancing. And then there seemed to be, the last two weeks of March, a great demand for the brush chipping services. So that was a little bit of a stutter step, and then a large outpouring of requests, and all the requests were answered with brush chipping. But as a result, the chipping invoicing, the amounts were over what was expected in March. So with that, kind of, Dan, if you can just give an update on how we go about then accepting the billing and making the payment would be helpful.
I'd be happy to. And the reason it's in front of the commission is the contract specifically requires, if the amount were to be exceeded, that it come to the commission, and Corey can speak to this. It's not a budgetary issue. There's lots of money for brush chipping in the fiscal 1920 budget. But it was there for the commission to be able to monitor how much money was being spent, the demand for the program. And what happened, as the general managers talked about, contractor asked for authority, was told, yes, do any requests that you get. And then between the COVID shutdown and the amount of requests that came in, I think they went over their total by, I guess, somewhere between 5% to 10% in order for the bill to be processed. It needs approval. This is measured, and again, Corey can talk more to this, but they're paid on a time and materials basis, not a flat fee basis, so we know the work that they did and what they're paid compensation for.
All right. You still there, Dan?
I'm here.
Okay. Anything further?
No, sorry. Nothing. I forgot that people can't see me stop speaking. Nothing further.
Exactly. All right. Thank you, Dan. All right. So I'm going to poll the commission for any questions on item 14E. Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Approve. Commissioner Tyson?
I don't have any questions. This is a surprise. I haven't seen this sort of thing before. I'm surprised that it's necessary because it's a time and materials contract. And put this in the context of, I think it's roughly $300,000 a year. It's not a giant number. So anyway, I don't have any questions or concerns.
All right. Commissioner Sprehn?
No question.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
No questions.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Commissioner Price would like to say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I gotta...
I approve.
I gotta do, Duffy, I gotta do a vote. I gotta do a formal vote here. Did I miss you in going through my list?
Yes, you did. Yes, you missed me.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Apologies. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? All right. If there's no further discussion on this item, I will entertain a motion for item C, Approval of the, we already did that one. So it's item...
14.
Item E, which is Approval of Authorization of Billing of the Amount of $11,337.50 for S.P. McClanahan for fiscal 2019-20 Brush Chipping Services. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording?
Vaughn, permission to approve?
Okay. Vaughn moved to approve. We need a second.
A second. Sprehn? Seconds.
Seconds. All right. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn?
Approved.
Commissioner Tyson?
Approved.
Commissioner Price?
Approved.
Commissioner Sprehn?
Approved.
Commissioner Carr?
Approved.
Commissioner Kearney?
Approved.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will now move to item 15, Consent Calendar. So we have on the consent calendar, Approval of Draft Minutes of March 17, 2020, Special Meeting, Approval of the Draft Minutes of the March 17, 2020 Regular Meeting, and the Received Period Report, Received Period Report 9, March 2020. Any comments from the staff on the consent calendar? Seeing none. Would anyone like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Vice President Vaughn?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
No.
Back to this time. Commissioner Sprehn?
No.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
No.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent calendar 15. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording?
Kearney moves.
Duffy seconds.
Thank you very much. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
All right. President Warren?
Approved.
Vice President Vaughn?
Approved.
Commissioner Tyson?
Approved.
Commissioner Price?
Approved.
Commissioner Sprehn?
Approved.
Commissioner Carr?
Approved.
And Commissioner Kearney?
Approved.
All right. And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 16, Received Disbursements for April 2020. Financial Consultant Vargas, please share the disbursement. Allow for the report.
Yes, and as, it's amazing that we have an update for the disbursement.
I'm shocked.
I know. We just approved, thank you for approving, a payment to McClanahan. So their invoice for brush chipping Area 3 is $27,815. I also have an addition, Sarah Hendricks' invoice for April 1st through the 15th, $1,512.50. And we have a reimbursement that needs to be paid to Neil Caton for CERT supplies. It's a, I believe it's a printer, $594.44, bringing total disbursements for April to $101,309.47. And that is...
All right.
It's for my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or discussions from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No question.
Commissioner Price?
No question.
Commissioner Sprehn?
No question.
Commissioner Carr?
No question.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. Thank you. We've adopted the item 16, which is the disbursement report. We will now move to item 17, Commission Member Reports. Vice President Vaughn, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Tyson?
Boy, I feel like there should be something to report, but I guess not.
Commissioner Price?
I just have a question, maybe to Roger and to George. Is there anything that's needed from the district because of the new appointments of Councilmember Cavita Tonka and Courtney Corrigan to the new committee at the city council level to look into the report and its impact on the South County report on the town?
I don't, I'll take it. I don't think anything is needed at this point because the direction of the town was really for staff to work with those two committee members to draft a response and create a questioning with Supervisor Semidion. Again, this is coming from staff's awareness of this, these reports. So until they come to us, I think they have everything they need.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Sprehn, anything additional?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
Nothing additional for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Warren, I'm just gonna say I'm gonna miss not having the pathways run this year. It's always fun to see everyone out there for that. It's gonna be a disappointment.
Yes.
And with that, we're gonna move towards our adjournment. This is, this will conclude the regular meeting of Los Angeles Hills County Fire District. This meeting adjourns at 9:12 PM. The next meeting will take place via Zoom on May 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Special Projects Services Consultant Hendricks, please stop the recording.